To another great meeting. Mr. Jones is stuck in Richmond and will not be joining us today, I regret to say. So I want to let you know that he's up there and cannot get away. We will begin with our first presentation, the 2040 Vision to Action Community Coalition Update, and Joe Voorhees.
Yes, sir.
We welcome you, sir. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Joe Voorhees, Committee Chair for the Virginia Beach 2040. We also have several members present today, David Weiner, Cindy Orocha, who is the Vice Chair, and then Kathy Warren helps us, and Sherlene Cooper as well.
Well, we're delighted to have all of y'all with us.
Sure. We thank you for the opportunity to share the committee's 2017 accomplishments and our 2018 forecast. Last year's update was less about progress and more about plans. I'm pleased that this year's report focuses more on progress in accomplishing our assigned mission. Quick review, what is the vision? The vision is Virginia Beach is the most livable coastal community in the world, located within the southern Chesapeake Bay region. It is defined by its rich natural resources and exciting, diverse, and interconnected neighborhoods. We are united by our broad social, cultural, and recreational offerings, a thriving regional economy, and lifelong learning opportunities that create a synergy where all citizens can live healthy lives, grow daily, continually reinvent and prosper. So, having the 2040 mission that was endorsed by you, the City Council, in 2012, our role is twofold: to educate and communicate the vision with regional bodies, delegation, and community groups through active engagement; and number two, to evaluate the city's efforts toward attaining the vision. Our three goal areas remain the same. Number one, community engagement and outreach. Our 2017 goal was to present to 15 community organizations. We identified and presented to eight organizations. Our audiences range from the Okta-Nigerians to millennials, from civic clubs, education ministers, the business community, to city commissions and boards. Not only has the 2040 vision been well-received, our outreach efforts have resulted in VTAC being invited to speak at other organizations. Where it was appropriate, each organization was invited to be a vision partner. A vision partner embraces the vision by engaging citizens and bringing 2040 into the focus. We continue to maintain an ongoing list of organizations that are contacting and coordinating presentations with. So, as you guys can see, MEAC, Virginia Beach Go Smart, Bayfront Advisory Committee, Fourth Precinct Citizen Advisory Committee, the Shore Drive Community Coalition, the Lynn Haven River Now, C-TAC Community Civic League, Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations. So, obviously, we've reached out to many different organizations. We've also, this year, we expanded the realm of community outreach and invited community leaders from areas relative to the vision elements to our meetings. Having subject matter experts share current data provides the committee accurate information to share with, within the community. We also had individual entities reach out to us to share project information, disparity study, et cetera. So, as you can see, we've had many guest speakers, Andy Friedman and Karen Prochilo from the Virginia Beach Housing Study, Kathy Warren, Burton Station SGA Plan Update, Kate Pittman from The Vibe, Ashby Moss from the Pembroke SGA, Thomas Johnson, Commercial and Residential Mixed-Use Development, Dr. Aaron Spence, Full Day Kindergarten Pre-K Expansion Plans, and Student Discipline Task Force Initiatives, Brian Solis for the Transit Planning Update, Ashlyn Hughes from the City Strategic Goals Model, Gary McCollum and Bruce Smith, Disparity, and Nina Salazar from the Arts and Mean Business. VTAC, the city accountability, number two. We'll use Open Performance Portal and Mid-Year Progress Report to track the scorecard metrics. We are pleased that the portal is organized around vision elements. And number three, VTAC membership. We had several new members appointed this year as we continue to complement city demographics. New members range from former military resident to young professionals. Both have a big stake in the city's future. Current membership is 19. And as you can see, I'm the chairperson. Cindy Orocha is the Vice Chair, and Peggy Lane was the Chair last year, so she's still on the committee. But as you can see, we rotated committee leadership. Peggy did a great job. We have two members that have been on since the initial 2012, which is Georgia Allen and Dan Edwards. And Dan Edwards is actually stepping off our committee, but we have somebody else from the educational realm coming back. Membership tenures were defined to allow VTAC to preserve institutional knowledge while allowing turnover for new members. Our orientation process allowed new members to learn quickly about the vision, the city, and VTAC. They began to contribute quickly to VTAC's discussion activities. There are two important factors indicating the degree members are engaged in the committee's vision: attending routine monthly meetings and supporting outreach events. VTAC did both. So, one of our charters is each member has to be at at least 75% of the meetings throughout the year, and we've, all members have accomplished that. So, VTAC 2018 goals. 2018, looking ahead, our three goals will remain the same: community outreach and guest speakers. We are already off to an exciting start. Last week, Jim Spoor came and spoke to us. You know, obviously, he's the CEO of Revent Hampton Roads. And actually, last night, we had a meeting with the Sandbridge Civic League. That went really well. David was, attended that one. In February, we have our monthly meeting. We'll be attending the Achievable Dream Program at C-TAC Elementary, so we will be there early greeting the students, and we're pretty excited about that. We would like to develop a social media presence, possibly host a vision partner forum, and quantify the scorecard. So, you know, community outreach, at least 16 presentations. Continue to have community stakeholders as presenters. Establish social media, vision partner forum. City accountability, develop a 2040 scorecard. Use the Open Performance Portal to monitor scorecard progress. And our membership, to maintain active membership at 20. So, we're always looking for new, diverse members, so if anybody ever wants to recommend anybody, we're, you know, here with open arms. So, which, each element, which you have a handout, which is defined, are bold steps, are important and interrelated. These are areas to which VTAC will pay close attention in 2018. Connected community. Now that light rail is no longer in the transportation alternative mix, we await your guidance on how this facet, alternative transportation of the element, will be achieved, addressing the city's future transportation needs. Diverse community. This element continues to be in the news. Trends point to the minority-majority shift where Virginia Beach in 2040 will be a plurality community. Combine this with the expectation that in 2040, Virginia Beach expects to lead the area in women-owned and minority business adventures. Admittedly, there is work to be done here, and we look forward to seeing efforts to make this a reality. Regionalism. We support the city when it takes a leadership role to address important regional issues. We acknowledge that Virginia Beach citizens' commuter patterns for work and leisure are regional, which leads us to acknowledge the benefits of Greater Hampton Roads as a region. While no one expects Virginia Beach leaders to expose the city and its citizens to circumstances that are inherently detrimental to it, we strongly encourage working collaboratively to build on our regional strengths and create synergy for the Greater Hampton Roads as a region. We believe that we are in sync with the city's strategic goal model and can be an asset to you in painting the dynamic picture of the city's future. 2040 will be here before you know it, 22 years and counting. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the SGA office staff for their continued administrative support. We welcome your feedback. Any questions?
Sure. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we certainly appreciate everything y'all are doing over there. Are there any questions or comments? Thanks so much for a great presentation. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joe.
We'll now move over to the City Manager's Update. The first one's Adopt a Drain. You're going to do that introduction there, Mr.--
Yes, sir. I'd like to, Mayor, Members of Council, I would defer to our sponsoring Council lady to make maybe an opening comment. Would you like to?
I'd, well, just like to say thank you, because you guys have been awesome. We've talked a lot on the phone, and briefly, or yesterday? Was it yesterday?
Yes, it was yesterday.
So, I'm just excited to show you guys what they've put together, and I think we'll all be really pleased with this.
So, today, we have Melanie Coffey, and she has worked diligently to, she was out ahead of me. I remember when you initiated this, and I wrote all your notes down, and I sent it to staff, and she said she was like three weeks ahead of me working on it way before we even told the boss about it, so here's Melanie. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your notes from--
Thank you so much. Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council.
Good afternoon. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here today, just to give you an update following your resolution on September 5th to implement the Adopt a Drain program. I'm going to address what the program is, its goals, the other programs it connects to, the impacts, and run you through how it'll work and our next steps. So, Adopt a Drain is a volunteer program to promote stormwater awareness. Through adoption, residents will pledge to keep their drains clear of debris, as shown in these before and after pictures. The program will be managed with a mapping tool, and will have more than 40,000 drains available for adoption, so plenty for everyone. The pledge will be to clear debris from the drain at least six times per year, which is similar to the other adopter programs, and to report stormwater pollution and maintenance needs to the city. That's very important. Program goals are to support our stormwater program through both education and reporting requirements of our new MS4 permit, and it also supports our maintenance program by having additional inspections of our assets to let us know if there are pollution problems or maintenance needs. So, we have about stormwater, we have about seven stormwater inspectors in our operations group that are just primarily responsible for doing these inspections of our assets. And they need to visit more than 40,000 drains to see if they need maintenance, so you can see the scale of the problem. So, our adopters can help us improve our response time to these maintenance needs just by reporting it, things like clogged drains. The new Adopt a Drain program connects two existing city programs. It'll complement both our storm drain marking program. Now, that's been in place for more than 12 years. You may have noticed the plastic or the metal markers shown here that are on storm drains in your neighborhood, and those have been placed by volunteers, many of them by Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops. We estimate that more than 9,000 markers have been installed so far. We hope that Adopt a Drain would encourage more participation and volunteers placing more of these markers now that they're engaged with the Adopt a Drain program, and it would help with our stormwater pollution awareness. It also complements our other adopter programs managed by Parks and Recreation for things like streets and waterways. So, if they want to take it to the next level, we want to encourage them to maybe adopt a spot as well and participate in any of these programs. So, how does this program impact pollution prevention? Basically, just the basics, you know, rainwater flows off your roof, your lawn, the streets, and it carries pollutants and debris with it down into our storm drains and into our waterways. So, it is a significant source of pollution. And since the best way to address stormwater pollution is to prevent it in the first place, clearing debris from in front of these drains can remove the pollutants before they even enter our waterways. Engaging our residents in preventing stormwater pollution is a big step toward improving our local water quality. Now, the Office of Volunteer Resources has also helped us assess the volunteer potential of this Adopt a Drain program. So, with the new program, we have the potential to increase our Public Works volunteer hours by nearly 50%, and that's based on if residents adopt, say, 1,500 drains this next year. So, this would be equivalent to an added value of $35,000 to the city, and it has potential to grow each year. So, the idea is they adopt a drain, and they're doing it this year, but hopefully the next year and the year after, and they just incorporate it into their normal lawn maintenance. Other potential impacts: Virginia Beach is facing some significant flooding challenges, and while drains that are blocked by debris are not the primary cause of flooding, this program can help reduce localized flooding. So, that's basically when the drain becomes completely clogged, so it could impact the water flowing into that particular location. So, this is an example inlet of one that's been completely clogged. Promoting awareness of storm drains and education on how they function and resources to report issues to the city is also going to improve our stormwater program moving Now, I'd just like to review how the program will work. So, Adopt a Drain programs have been implemented nationwide, and Public Works has researched about 10 other programs this past fall. Some of the key functions are basically all related to this mapping tool ability, and that's primarily the main component of all these programs. So, basically, this tool can track the total number of drains that have been adopted, show the adopted drains, the available drains, search by location, naming features, and also set of volunteer guidelines. Now, we've engaged our technology department, and they've been great in assisting us with the development of the map tool. So, they've implemented a tool using Code for America. And basically, this screenshot here is an image of what the tool will look like on your mobile device, so it's mobile size, but it's actually just a responsive website, so it adjusts to fit your device, so it's not an app that you have to download. You can just save it as a bookmark. Now, I just wanted to roll through how you do the adoption. It's very simple. First, sign up, enter some basic information. This is just a screenshot of the sign-up sheet. Next, you can search the map by neighborhood or by entering an address. So, your choice. The drains will drop down and appear on the map, and it'll show you which drains are available for adoption in one color, drains that have already been adopted in another color. And then, if you've already adopted drains, it'll show your drains that you've adopted in another color. And then, you can click on the drain that you want to adopt and give it a name. So, you might want to use your name, your child's name, your dog's name. You might want to use, like, if it's a Boy Scout troop or a Girl Scout troop, they could use their number. We've had some people do that with the stormwater marking program. And also, it could be the name of your business. The volunteer guidelines include all the information that you would need to know about how to stay safe, clearing debris, and reporting pollution and maintenance needs to Public Works. So, reporting can be done by phone or by using that VB Works app that hopefully everybody's familiar with. So, our next steps. The mapping tool has been developed. Right now, what we're doing is we're in the process of modifying the format of our asset data, our stormwater asset data, so that it'll coordinate with a map tool. So, this work will be completed by early February, and then we're going to have a one-month testing period, so we'll see if we can break it. We're probably going to ask Code for America to help us with that and see, make sure that it's working pretty well. So, our launch will be this March, which will be great timing. It's a good time for spring promotion. We have a lot of spring events. People are getting outdoors. So, we're going to have a news release. We'll have announcements on social media, and we'll also be coordinating all of that through our media and communications team. In March, residents will basically be able to adopt a drain using the map tool. They'll be able to see adopted drains, and they'll be able to share their adoptions on social media. There's even a built-in feature in the tool for that. Now, we've also been generating some ideas. I know we did, Councilwoman Abbott mentioned we had some phone calls. We've been trying to generate some future ideas, how we can build this moving forward. So, I put some of those up here today. Things like a video series, developing promotional materials and giveaways that we can give out to the adopters to help promote more stormwater awareness and involvement in other programs. And we're also looking at a weather notification that would generate an email to adopters in advance of a storm, so they can clear their drains before a large rain comes. There are other promotional opportunities, too, to get the word out about Adopt a Drain, so we can increase the number of signups. We're going to promote it basically at events and leverage our other water quality partners, like Ask HR Green, that's our regional partner. And then, we also have contracts with Lynn Haven River Now and Elizabeth River Project, so we'll try to get them out there as well promoting this new program. The other ideas we had were to engage our local businesses and maybe some faith-based organizations as well. We usually get some good response from them also. So, in close, I just wanted to point out that of the 10 locations that I mentioned earlier that we researched, we are by far the largest. We have more than double the number of drains of the largest program. So, I'm hoping that you all will be some of our early adopters in the program and help spread the word about our new Adopt a Drain program.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Bob?
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a really great program. Have you been in discussions with the Clean Community Commission? They have quite a network of volunteers and everything that do some parallel, you know, type of work, but I think this is a unique program and everything. But, once again, you know, the, because the Clean Community Commission's involved with Earth Day and another of initiatives, and they have a network of volunteers that might be able to connect us with us.
Yes, that would be great. We have, we had a meeting in November with Waste Management. We haven't gone to Clean Community Commission yet, but Waste Management is the liaison for the commission, so with Kristi Reins. So, we did sit down and have a good conversation with her about the new program, and we've also passed the Storm Drain Marking Program that's traditionally been in Waste Management, has now moved back to Public Works Engineering since it fits so well with this program. We thought it would be better to have it managed by one group.
Any other questions, comments? John?
Just a note, I mean, I know that the Pearl Home program has really been successful for Lynn Haven River Now with the flags, and I think that they'd originally gotten that with a green, but I know that that would probably help to, that's probably one of the things that you're considering.
That is included in our contract with them, actually. So, as part of our contract for outreach services, they try to recruit residents to join Pearl Homes. Elizabeth River Project, similar thing. They have River Star Homes. And then, for folks that aren't involved in one of those groups, they can also participate in Base Star Homes, which is through the Ask HR Green program. So, we've got something for everyone.
Right. Jessica?
I just wanted to say about the program and how it's, how it's being developed. When we were talking, we were going through a lot of the other municipalities that have a similar program, and I got to say, I think our system is going to be one of the most intuitive and user-friendly, because what I kept finding when I was researching them was that they were not easy to sign up. It wasn't really clear what you were doing, and so I'm just really happy that the program looks like it's going to be very smooth, and I'm excited to see where we are at in March. But really, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? And Jessica, thank you for working with them. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much for coming over. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We now will go to annual crime statistics. You want to introduce the chief there, buddy?
Yes, sir. Twice a year, we try to get our chief to put together some stats and come in, and this is his largest presentation, always early in the year. And so, I'd like to welcome Chief Jim Severa and his Deputy Chief to present these numbers.
If we welcome you, and we welcome everyone that joined you today, too. Glad to have you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor is not here, members of council, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Cover. First, thank you for giving us the time to present the end-of-year crime statistic report, which we like to call our CompStat Report, because as I always explain, we do CompStat every month. CompStat is where the precinct captains, the detective bureau captains are required to give a report out each month on crime stats, on responses, and on what they are doing to ameliorate those crime issues. So, we like to use this as our end of the year. We quote Chief Ed Flynn of the Milwaukee, Wisconsin Police Department, and some job success is measured by what does not happen. Chief Flynn is retiring today after 47 years of police experience. I like to quote him because he was an adjunct professor at Patterson State College in Patterson, New Jersey, when I was a young cop.
Thank you, didn't you?
Yes, sir. When I was a--
Of course.
It's every, every meeting we have to talk--
You're a dyer.
Well, he was my adjunct professor when I was working on my undergrad degree as a police officer in New Jersey. You know, a lot of times, we like to give stats, and I'm always asked by the media, where were we last year? Are we up and down from the year before? And that's important to look at, but we also like to look at trends. Yes, most of our numbers are down from last year, except for robbery. Robberies are ticking slightly up this past year. We do, we analyze all of our robberies. We do know that the majority of them now are not commercial robberies. Commercial robberies used to be the majority a number of years ago, but if you go into a commercial establishment now to do an armed robbery, you get very little cash, but you get a lot of debit card receipts. So, the robbery genre, if you will, has transitioned to more of a street crime issue than a commercial issue. We know, I'll show you the areas that we have most of our robberies, and like I said, we do analyze those. We also look at our clearance rate. We like to acknowledge the fact that our detective bureau's clearance rate is considerably higher than that of a national average, and I'll give you those statistics specifically. We break down our crimes by violent, non-violent. As you can see, everything is tracked down this past year. Now, I do want to caution us about criminal homicides. Homicides sometimes happen irrespective of police responses in the community. We do know that our homicides are down this year, but what we'll see over a five-year period is that they usually fluctuate between the low number of 14 and the high of 22. That's kind of like our base numbers that we work in. We do know that a number of those are domestic-related. That does not mean that we don't take it as serious as a street homicide, but a domestic-related homicide, we know we could do very little to stay inside someone's home during this kind of a domestic-related issue. We do like to look at our property crimes. The interesting one on this property crime slide is your burglary numbers, or your burglary Burglaries have been tracking down for a number of years. I can say that in the early 1990s, when we opened up the Fourth Precinct, which we affectionately referred to as the Kempsville Police Department, we did a study of burglaries, because Kempsville had the highest, still has the highest number of residential units in the city. And we noticed that citywide, there was approximately 3,600 burglaries committed in the early 90s. We're down into the 700 ratings. We're analyzing a number of things that we do better, that we do better on a response, that we do much better on identifying trends and then responding to those, but also, technology plays a big piece in this. And I want to say, our citizens are extremely engaged in crime prevention within their own neighborhoods. And we feel that when you put all this together, including our very robust school resource officer program, and you may say, what do school resource officers have to do with burglaries? You'll find out that a number of burglaries are committed by youth. Those SROs know everyone. So, if we get a tidbit of information, an SRO sometimes can give us the complete picture as to the juveniles that we happen to be looking for. And we are happy to report, for our friends in the fire department, that arson has also been tracking down over the last five years. Okay, numbers are great. Let's look per 1,000 population. Our numbers right now are somewhere equal to that of about the mid-1960s. We feel very proud about that number as the city continues to grow and expand, and you know, we have, I read recently, it's somewhere in the vicinity of 460,000 full-time residents. We do know that we had, I believe, last year, between day, folks coming to our city for the daytime and those spending the evening in our city, somewhere in the vicinity of 17 million visitors in our city. So, our numbers have been tracking down. We're very proud of the fact that citywide, we're somewhere in about the mid-1960s. I'm going to say the early 60s. And again, we like to break this out on clearance rates, on our Part 1 clearance rates. I compare those on a national average. You will see that ours are considerably higher over a number of years, and they continue to maintain such. We also break it out for our property crimes. We had a good property crime clearance rate this year. You see, it extended by about five points this particular year. And again, some of this has to do with the fact that we work very closely with our commercial establishments and identifying cases, and then responding as quick as we can to those We analyze who we arrest and why. The number that really bothers me the most are the number of juveniles that we arrest for robbery. Now, robbery is a violent crime. Robbery is either done with a weapon. It could involve injury to the victim or fear to the victim. If you're a victim of a robbery, it is a very traumatic case. This past year, we were a little concerned. We're arresting a number of juveniles in this particular case. You also could see, as I said earlier, we've arrested 30, almost 38% of our arrests for burglary happened to be juveniles. You know, to, I don't know if it's, if it's just maybe too many years of experience, but that number's to be expected, the number's not to be expected, are the number of robberies and the fact that we arrested three juveniles this year for homicide. This is where I like to look at trends. Where are we in trends? We also like to look at two things. One, our statistical outputs. The other ones are long-term outcomes, or what we like to say, do you want quantity or do we want quality? You could look at this particular chart, and you could say, well, chief, over a 12-year period-- this particular chart, and you could say, well, chief, over a 12-year period, you're down 32% on your arrests and 43% on your tickets. That's really something people look at on a data set and say, how come you're down lower than where you were 12 years ago? I mean, it's been tracking down year after year after year, including your calls for service. That is because a number of years ago, we redesigned, re-engineered how we do business. We now look at what we call the Big Six. The Big Six are your major crimes in the city. We have focused and refocused our energies and our efforts on major issues that involve everyone in the city, as opposed to what I call your minor traffic and your minor misdemeanor arrests. What we looked at is what is your long-term outcome for writing a number of inspection sticker violations, as opposed to putting resources in those areas at those times where crime will occur, to prevent the crime, and then to quickly respond to the crime issues. So, the next slide will show you that over the same time period, you've seen almost a 45% reduction in violent crime in our city. That's a pretty good reduction over a 12-year period, as well as a 37% reduction in property crime. During that time, we also maintain clearance rates higher than the national average. We consider that to be the driving, one of the driving issues that we wanna deal with. We wanna deal with quality as opposed to quantity. We wanna deal with long-term outcomes as opposed to data set outputs. We want to deal with identifying criminal issues and responding to them as quickly as we can. As I said earlier, sometimes success is measured by what does not happen, and our industry happens to be one of those businesses. However, wanted to show you a success story that we have. Now, larcenies, by and large, are not a big criminal driver, but in the area of Sandbridge, we had a number of issues last year with larcenies from buildings, larcenies from cars, larcenies everywhere. And the first precinct took control of this. They did a number of police-related tactics and strategies. They also worked with the community to advise people that, yes, you're here in this beautiful piece of real estate, and Sandbridge is, it's the northernmost outer bank. It's, it's, it's drop-dead gorgeous. But lock your car. Or better yet, take your gun out of your car, lock the car, bring the gun into the house, and lock the door of the house, because people still go through places wishing to do larcenies from vehicles, and larcenies from homes, or larcenies from your beach bar. And what we did was, we cut this down by 76% in one year, and we have to really give some kudos to the first precinct for looking at that. And I have another anecdotal story that I'll bring up in a few more minutes. Robbery density, or violent crime density first. You know, every year, we show this, and we've got some great analysts, we have some great computer models, which will tell us where our issues are going to arise, I could tell you without looking at a computer. It's going to be what we call 227 Zone, which is down near the oceanfront, 326 Zone, which is basically towards our western bayside area. The one that's beginning to emerge, and this is not a positive emergence, is the Holland Road Corridor. For, we've been seeing an uptick in our robberies, an uptick in our violent crimes in and around the Holland Road Corridor. And so we are now beginning to, as I said earlier, re-engineer how we do business and put officers within those areas on a long-term basis, so that we can begin to interact with those criminal issues. We break down our violent crime into robberies, and when I say 227, as I've explained many times, that is the Beach Barrow, but it is not the entire Beach Barrow. We know where the main issues occur at, in the Beach Barrow. We could tell you exactly what 100 block on Atlantic Avenue is the most problematic, and we could pretty much point to the specific areas on Atlantic Avenue that are most problematic. What I do wanna say with a lot of sincerity right now is that senior leadership in the city are beginning to realize that, and after a number of years of talking about this, we're extremely pleased with the fact that we've gotten a lot of senior leadership, buy-in to understand that it's not the entire oceanfront, it is one specific area. So I'd like to thank everyone for listening to this story and understanding that particular issue. Residential burglaries, we looked at that area, what we call 326, 327. Now, to put this in proper context, there are a number of single-family dwellings in that particular area where you see the highest concentration in 326. That is basically multifamily, an entire multifamily dwelling area. So we expect to have more of residential burglaries, where you have more residences, but that is where we're concentrating. One of the things that we've done, and in 2015, we were given a beautiful acknowledgement by the General Assembly for a crisis intervention team and the work that they've done. Our numbers are a little bit lower this year. One of the things that we do wanna thank council is the extra overtime budgeting finances that was supported by not only the city manager's office, but by council, because we were able to use some of that funding to interact on our crisis intervention responses. Crisis intervention is basically those unfortunate individuals in our city who are suffering from a mental episode. We have to temporarily detain them, emergency custody orders, suicide attempts, and all of those rolled into one. That's our crisis intervention. At one time in policing, we responded to a case like that. If the individual violated the law, they were simply arrested. On then, they were arrested, and we take them over to the city jail, and they were not given any follow-up counseling or any follow-up interventions. The new way of responding to these cases, it is a little bit more labor-intensive, but is first of all, to de-escalate as much as we can, because if somebody's having a mental episode, they're not thinking clearly, quite obviously, and it could have a tendency to become a violent encounter very quickly. Our officers have done a magnificent job through training and through supervision, and the fact that they believe in the sanctity of life, in to de-escalate those situations, eventually bring it to a positive resolve, and I will bring up some more of that shortly, and get the individual into the psychiatric system rather than into the criminal justice Okay, numbers are numbers. Let's put them all together. You can go right down the list. You can see the number of arrests. You can see the number of field contacts. How many times would you stop a car? How many times would you write a summons? And that's all important to track. What's more important to track are our totals, and that's about 270,000 times we interacted with a citizen on that previous chart. And I do want you to know that every time we interact with someone, it is usually in a high-stress situation. I always, when I present to various groups, business and citizen groups, I always ask the following question, how many of you have called 911 to tell the cops you're having a great day? Nobody does that. You call 911 and say, get a police unit out here because something is going extremely wrong. So our officers responded or interacted with a citizen 270,000 times last year, and we track how many times we have to use force. We are the only governmental agency empowered to use force within the continental United States. We have some of the most highly-trained, absolute fantastic warriors in our city. We know who we're talking about. We have some of the biggest jets in the world that can do phenomenal things. Yet, your local police department has ultimately more responsibility, more authority than any military organization within the United States. Once they come outside the wire, they have no authority. Your police officers do, on both sides of a military wire. So we count how many times we use force. Now, when, I want you to look at the number of times that we use force, and you say, well, that's pretty high, 654 times last year. Most of those are on the low end of using force. In other words, we call it contact controls, compliance techniques. Somebody just needs a little bit extra help in getting arrested, because nobody wants to be arrested. Nobody says, oh, yes, officer, thank you, and puts their hands behind their back. They usually have to be coerced, in a minor sense. So our officers do that, and we track every time. We track, one of the few police departments in the country, every time we point a weapon at a human, 59 times last year. Usually, that involves more than one officer. Usually, that involves our special weapons teams, and as we know, we had an officer injured, shot three times this year, and our officers returned fire in that particular case. So firearms discharged at a human by an individual officer, we had three officers return fire in that case. We also track how many times our K-9 apprehends someone, and we track very closely on that. K-9 is a fantastic tool, a fantastic strategy to use, as long as it's used within the proper context. Okay, 270,000 times we interacted with people. We leveled 818 weapons violation charges last year. That's everything from carrying a gun concealed, discharging a firearm, carrying a knife, waving your knife. We've arrested people with machetes, noon chucks, pick something that could be used as a weapon, 818 times last year. During that time, four times, we physically encountered someone, and the gun was in their hand, pointing at someone. Seven times, the officers found the gun, what I call within close proximity, they're going for the gun. The gun isn't in the backseat, it's not under the front seat. They're going for the weapon, all officers interact with them. Four times, we interacted with somebody with a knife in their hand, and at no time did your officers use deadly force. They believe in the sanctity of life, they believe in training, as long as they have the tactical advantage, they do the best they can. All of these cases, we call without incident, because at the end of the report that the officer writes, suspect arrested without incident. Can we go back to the other one? Just one final comment on the previous slide. We train, we have policies and procedures, we have great written training, written recommendations that the officers have to use, but it's a very complex environment. Complexity means that variables change, and as I was advised this morning by Deputy Chief Zuccaro, who couldn't make this meeting, the other individual in this particular case, he didn't get the memo. That other individual didn't get the training. He forgot that he was supposed to get down on the ground with the knife in his hand. Our officers had to do that. So I bring this up because many times, people wanna say what the police should do, and I always say, is absolutely great. In a perfect world, that's how it would happen. If you had a mathematical equation, A plus B would equal C all the time. But in a police equation, A and B is the unknown variable, so we don't know how the outcome is gonna happen. Officers have to react to these kind of situations. So, little bit of the summary of this. 270,750 times, we had contact with the citizen, most of which was in a high-stress situation. We used force 654 times. Out of those times, we had 77 citizen complaints, which was total of the 270,000. Citizen complaints related to use of force was 17, or represents 0.006% of the time, a citizen made a complaint on an officer when the officer had to use force. That is an absolute phenomenal number. I think our cops deserve a lot of credit for the fact that they know how to de-escalate as much as they can, or they know how to prevent something. Another anecdotal story, we had a woman the other day who had a domestic situation. She was very distraught. She had a weapon. She left the house, and she told her significant other she was gonna commit suicide. We were able to locate the woman. She was in her car, she had the weapon, the weapon was pointed to her head. The officers took tactical advantage. They de-escalated the situation. Now, this was a night, I believe it was about 12 degrees out, with that wind chill, it was probably zero. They talked this woman from an irrational state into a semi-rational state. They were able then to apprehend her and get her that proper psychological counseling that I told you about. That's the first case this year that we had without incident. Another case that we had not too long ago was, Special Investigations contacted the first precinct and said there's gonna be a house party, and gave them the location of this particular house party. Okay, they went on social media, and it was being advertised, a wild house party, dancers, drugs, alcohol, and everything. Officers set up. They shut the house party down before it started. By the time they left, they made five arrests for weapons violations, that is, five individuals came with guns. They made a number of arrests for cocaine and other illicit substances, and a number of arrests for alcohol violations, and then some violent encounters beyond that. What they did, I think, was they stopped a very bad situation before it even happened. We're the only city in the area, I'm gonna say we're probably one of the only in the state that has a full-time prescription medication take-back program. What is that? Everyone has prescription medication at home. It's usually in your medicine cabinet, sometimes it's four or five years old, and what we have is a system in our city, you can come into any precinct, and you can take that medication, place it into one of our boxes, and we will then dispose of it. Absolutely phenomenal, last year, 3,138 pounds, 1.5 tons of prescription medication, we were able to take back. We have to pay for the bins every year, there's no question about that. We have to pay for the containers every year. However, a lot of credit to the sergeant that was able to find a company, an incineration company, who disposes of it for free. They do it as a public service.
All right, chief, we thank you very much. Questions or comments, please? Yes, John?
Two. First of all, I think it's always been evident that the police department does a great job of using data to be effective. So I know that managers always talk about database decision-making. I don't know any department that does it better than the police department. And I think these numbers are phenomenal. I mean, you can have a lot of problems, but I've loved the other problems we have versus having crime problems. And I have to say, I never go to a civic league or any other place and ever entertain an issue about, we have a crime problem. I don't know how many council members or board of supervisors around the country can say they can go out to a civic league or a PTA and over 16 years, never get a question about a crime problem. And it's a tribute to the fine officers and also the great analysis. I suspect, you know, many people are here to do that, but it really pays off, and I appreciate it.
Shannon?
I have a question about the mental health situation. I know the crisis intervention team, I know you work closely with the social services, what's that role called, the crisis intervention person there? It's the...
The emergency workers that they have.
Thank you, thank you. I saw some reports recently, I was meeting with the mental health agency, and they had shown me that the number of admissions, as you admitted, we don't want them in the criminal justice system, we want them in, you know, the mental health system, so we can get them some treatment. And the number of, I guess, self-enrolled individuals has increased dramatically. You almost have more self-initiated enrollments than you do forced, and when you're in a mental situation, that just seems odd to me, that someone isn't in their right mind, so to speak, but yet, they're in enough of a right mind that they're gonna admit themselves. So why do you think that increase is there? And who does that paperwork for the admission? The officers? Or the, or the social services department? Where does that break down?
If it's an emergency custody, we will do that. We will take that paperwork. If someone self-admits, they will handle that through mental health. I think some of it may have to do with education in the public, and that is, if you're beginning to go into a certain place, and some of these folks will repeat, they understand where it's heading, get yourself to help now rather than waiting later. I can tell you that the system is stressed, the entire mental health system is stressed, not only in this area, but in the entire state. I think Senator Deeds now is even up in front of the General Assembly explaining some of that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Barbara?
Well, I did get the...
Talk about that Sandbridge crime, I tell you.
Yeah, I did. I got to share that slide at the Sandbridge Civic League last night, and they were very appreciative, and I think those are wonderful statistics. And Squires was not there, so I got to do it, but I told him it was all of his hard work, and it really has paid off, and the community is really thankful.
Thank you.
I wind it up with two things. The first one, I kinda wanna follow up with Shannon. I had someone in my office just two weeks ago, and this isn't a matter of the individual not having the resources to take care of the problem, but first of all, there are not enough psychiatrists out there today just for your education, too. I mean, the city human services, you know, community services board, we're trying to work with EVMS to fund psychiatrists and them contracting with us after they graduate. But my point being, where the police came in, this was early in the morning, an adult child is absolutely out of control. The parent has their doctor on the phone, and everybody else they can call, but guess what? They finally said, let's call the police. In a CIT, trained officer came there, got things toned down, and also started the process of getting the immediate help that was needed right then and there. The long-term thing, they're gonna work out, it worked out fine, but it was that immediate help, and that's, I just wanna say, that training, I think, is just spectacular. How many officers are trained that way now? How many officers are trained that way now?
At last count, it was about three hundred and fifty, over eight hundred and twenty-six officers have gone through the complete forty-hour course.
Right. But I just tell you, to me, that's something that probably is going to be needed more, based on what we're seeing out there in our community. Then finally, I just want you to know, I'm speaking for this council, I'm speaking for the citizens of Virginia Beach. A great big thank you to you, your command staff, and most importantly, the people on the street each and every day. This city is the greatest city in the world. And I guarantee you one thing, if we had a high crime rate, it wouldn't be. And so, from the bottom of my heart, and I know I'm speaking for everyone in this city, a great big thank you to everyone, from you to everyone that works with you. We thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Very good, folks. We'll now move on to the convention center complex parking. Barbara, it's another thing you bring up, parking.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ron Williams is bringing up his charts, and we're going to engage today on where he's at with regards to his parking program.
Ron, we're glad to have you, look forward to this presentation.
Thanks, Mayor, and Mr. Council. I've got, of course, parking responsibility rests primarily with Barry Frankenfield and the planning department, of course, Kathy Warner, SGA Office Manager, and Rob Fries, our Parking Manager. And we also have Kyle Williams with Kim Lee Horn join us today, and Kyle will add a couple of points in a few minutes. What we're going to do is just give you a little bit of background about how we approach parking at the resort oceanfront, and then we're going to talk specifically about the three main facilities or development opportunities that we've discussed in recent weeks and months. So going back on the baseline, an understanding of where we've been, in 2013, a resort area parking strategy was completed, and that was an outburst of the Resort Strategic Action Plan. In that, had a series of recommendations for us to accomplish as a city, and in large part, with Rob Fries in his position, that's what he's been doing, is knocking that out, and in part, why we became an IPA accredited parking organization. And it's a smorgasbord, it's everything from better use of technology, to better branding, to incorporating the parking management staff earlier, when we're doing a development or planning for a facility, and so on and so forth. So Rob has been doing that. We also should recognize that it's an evolving industry, and that ride-sharing and/or development trends, you know, have an impact. And so, while 2013, we did that strategy, that was a point in time, and so we have to evolve with demands, trends, and development opportunities. As we've discussed a couple times, when we've talked about some of these major developments or facilities, we're going to have coming with force in the next few months, we've talked about the character of the oceanfront. It is very much a linear type of development, and the resort area parking strategy recognized that because of the considerations for parking challenges, or the patrons that would use the parking garages, what their destinations are, what the tolerances are for walking, that it recommended that when we look at parking and strategies and how to evolve that, particularly for parcel-specific development, that there are seven parking districts that have a natural element to them, as character districts and how they operate, and then the convention center is an additional district. And so, that has been the key part of focus as we have engaged with continuing from the parking strategy to Kim Lee Horn over the past several years now, building the Park Plus model, and focusing primarily over the past four to five years on the central beach area, because knowing that this was the next area ripe for redevelopment, like the Thirty First Alaskan Road Gateway has seen its redevelopment. And Kyle Williams, can you comment about the inputs you've had and the evolution of the Park Plus model and real-world experiences in building this baseline that we have for a second?
Sure. The Park Plus model was something that, again, kind of built off of that strategy, and what we realized in the parking industry was, the tools that we had as planners, they don't really keep up, they're very static in nature. I mean, if you look at the resort of Virginia Beach, you can't really pull a book off the shelf and go to a specific use and say, "That's the right demand that's going to be generated by it," because it's very dynamic, it's a resort area. And what we realized with Park Plus, and what you can do, is the model is really predicated on the two main things that drive parking. It's how close can I get to where I want to go, and how much are you going to charge me? And that really is what influences the decision-making of where somebody's going to park. The best part about it is it's calibrated to local conditions, so we went through a plethora of data collection from, you know, lot-by-lot basis, everything you see in those colors, you know, the reds, the blues, the greens, are all actual data that we've collected in these individual lots and calibrated to the land uses. So when a new development comes in, it gives us the ability to model it quickly, make a very educated, informed decision on what the parking demands might be, and if it doesn't come to fruition, we can test it in another scenario very, very quickly. It's been a living model, it's something we've been using, we focused on Central Beach initially, just because it's where a lot of energy and a lot of the investment and everything have been, but it's been a tremendous tool that we've been able to use and leverage as development and opportunities come to the door.
Now, the Kim Lee Horn team and the Park Plus model, in an extended way, Kyle, from a couple of specific projects, where we get the benefit of other activity in other areas is Mercedes-Benz Stadium, where the Atlanta Falcon play, and the fact that, so that's a facility, and understand its use and how the tools that we can use, and then, an event at a facility like that, like the NCAA National Football Championship, which was played there, that team, Kyle and his colleagues, were part of the analysis and understanding of the demands there. And so, it's good to have that kind of, you know, national presence and footprint of understanding what the other trends are as we go through our development and planning on these. And so, the graphic output that we use to just, you know, to be able to understand what's going on very quickly, other than the numbers, is what you see here. So this is our baseline scenario for Central Beach, and based on the demands that are there, what this scenario is showing you on a weekend at 3:00 PM, our peak season of the summer, where you see eighty to ninety percent utilization, which is that sweet spot, you do want that red area, that's the parking facilities, those actual red areas are parking facilities that are having parking occupancy in that range, which is good utilization. Where you see a land use that has a deficiency and underserved parking opportunity, it shows up as purple. So they don't necessarily have the assets for utilization at that time of day and during the weekend. Where you see the light blue is, again, parking facilities, but they're underutilized at that time.
There's a lot of those blue areas, too, are the private developments, those are, you know, the 7-Elevens in the corner that won't allow for public use. So anything you're seeing in larger, those higher occupancy, higher demand are going to be your public facilities, whether it's privately owned and sold commercially, or if it's a public facility itself.
Can I just get clarification on that? Because I was a little confused when I looked at this before. So I'm looking like it, kind of in the middle of Atlantic Avenue, you've got blue over and above are red.
Right here.
Like, right there. So is the red a city asset and the blues are not?
In that case, neither. So they're not, this is looking at all parking facilities, whether they're private or public. But it's on a parcel-specific...
So, but okay, but then, so we're looking at the utilization rate of a private lot that the public can't park in?
Correct, yeah. In this case, we are, because it still provides us valuable data. So in the Atlantic Avenue example, primarily, most of the parking in that area is for hotels. So if you get a hotel development that comes in, we can kind of query out and see how the hotels are generating parking along the oceanfront.
So what, you're looking to see if there's overflow from that into the public, then?
Somewhat, yes. Yeah, that's a component of it as well.
Thanks, Shannon.
So, take you back into what Jim said, this blue that you just pointed to, Ron, on Atlantic Avenue, so this is peak time in the summer, three o'clock, so shouldn't that all be red? Why is that blue? Why is it, so do they have way too much parking for what they need at that hotel? Or why is it blue? That doesn't make sense.
It could be, without, you know, diving into the details of what that land use actually is, that it's a zero to fifty percent occupancy, so it could still be upwards of, you know, if it's a thirty or forty space lot, if you've got fifteen of those, you know, spaces utilized, it's still going to show up blue, just because it's such a wider range. But without getting into the details of what each individual land use is, I honestly can't answer that question.
John O'Nair, and then John Moss, then we'll continue on with this.
Now, you see here, these are, you know, Nineteenth Street, like, public lots here.
That's like Dairy Queen up there, then, isn't it, that blue?
Dairy Queen will be right down here.
All right, yeah.
John O'Nair.
I'm just going to point, interjectable quickly, that that's part of why this analysis is so important, and that we have an awful lot of parking there that is not currently eligible for shared usage, that if we were allowed to do it, we would be a lot more efficient than we are. And the hotel use is a very great example. I mean, I went up, not this year, but the year before, on Saturday to the Thirty First Street parking garage on Saturday evening, I think about nine, ten o'clock, and drove by a sea of red spaces that were reserved for hotel use. They were empty, but you just drove by them. Now, that hotel, I'm quite confident on Saturday night, Fourth of July week, was completely full. It just means that even in late into the evening on a Saturday night, they weren't using all the spaces. So as we get into better technology and better able to monitor that, we can use those spaces that heretofore have had to sit empty to be able to use those for other users that don't need it overnight.
Right. John Moss is going to hold his question, and if you all hold this till we have the completion of this, I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Okay. So with this as backdrop of the tools we have, again, talking about the three projects in the Central Beach Entertainment District, another measure that we need to understand is what a five-minute or quarter-mile walking distance. And Rob, I think we have an article that we either sent out this past Friday, or we'll send out this upcoming week, that was a good article on highlighting that tolerance for walking in the industry, standards on that. And so, like the districts that was pointed out in the strategy, if, when you lay this quarter-mile, five-minute walking distance, you do see that difference that we highlighted a couple of slides ago about the convention center being its own area district, and then the Central Beach as well. And similarly, you know, we've kind of commented that the opportunity of a peer development here, and the dome development, are companion projects, and you do have some overlap, that's good for context of understanding the two developments, but, and their interrelation in the parking, and we'll analyze those as we look at what are the uses that are going to be recommended, whether the square footage is. And to make the final recommendation, it's not to say that they're independent, but they're codependent, and so we'll be looking at that as we look at those two and dive deeper into the parking demand analysis for those two, once we understand the square footages. And then, of course, the sports center here, we are starting to better understand that as we are defining what the size of the facility is proposed to be. So if we take the Park Plus model and look at least what has been proposed, what's the proposed size of the sports center, the proposed size of the dome site development, and the peer development vision, you'll see here, what we're depicting here is basically, when you increase the intensity on the parcels of the use without building, you'll start to see now, we get some more popping of purple. So the convention, what this is saying is, this use of the convention center by adding a sports center in this district is now, it's underserved by the parking that is there. This is an assumption that there's no garage, but we're just putting the uses on the dome site for just, for a look, so you understand the model again, and here. So that's what we have to work through, is then, where do you ramp up, what's the sweet spot for making sure that you're not over or underbuilding when you're at the parcel-specific parking development? So, switching to the convention sports center specifically, because this is where we are starting to settle on and understanding, as we start to finalize during the interim agreement period coming up, the final size of the sports center. What we understand, based on our experience, is that a medium convention center event requires about a thousand spaces, and a sports center, the baseline for a sports center is going to run at six hundred. And so, we can run concurrent events there today with the parking assets we have. But when you have two large events, an example would be a sports center event, like the United States Fencing Championships that we had last weekend, along with an auto show or a Comic-Con at the convention center, we are start, we're going to start to run into some deficiencies there. And so, as the sports tourism bookings start to increase, and we've got that fall, winter, and spring bookings overlapped with other types of conferences and conventions, we're going to have regular conflicts there. And so, when we put that into the Park Plus build model, and we target an estimated number of spaces, we looked, for example, the western lots that had been considered when we were doing the arena development, we came back to that and looked at those, also, we did not put in the full eastern lots at this time, but we looked at those, and you start to see where the purple went away from the land use, because now there is a servant, there are facilities serving the facility, and you'll start to see where we have capacity for growth in these two western lots, if we develop them at this time. So in order to achieve that, that is, constructing that type of lot is about a seven million dollar investment. For north of twelve hundred spaces, those western lots are just under a thousand spaces, and there's opportunity to realign some of those eastern spaces in order to achieve a number of this, that can give capacity for both those facilities, the convention and sports center, when there are large events. So that's the type of analysis that we're seeing so far on that one. The other two, we started to do some estimating in the Park Plus model, and because the square footages and the sizes are, you know, are still really pending, we have to get into the study of those once those square footages are finalized, but we're seeing a range of fifteen hundred to twenty-three hundred spaces within the ten acres at the dome site to serve that, those uses, which, you know, we've estimated somewhere around four hundred thousand square feet of development. And then the peer development, based on the vision of that private sector development on the parcels adjacent to the peer, plus the uses on the peer, the retail across the street, realistically, those demands need somewhere between seven to nine hundred, and within that could be some public parking as well. We, when we run those models, we see that that is, again, a companion project to dome site, and having public parking in both areas gives you another option. So for example, where we've had heavy public parking at Nineteenth and Twentieth Street, you can have additional public-owned parking at the pier that hasn't been offered in that district to date. So that's an option that we would look at. So again, just coming back and just reiterating that, the district approach, that's how we're continuing to analyze this and those walk tolerances, and we'll send you more information on that. And so, Mayor, what we're looking at this next quarter is that, as we get into the interim agreement on the sports center, that we would finalize that sizing and make recommendations for development of city-owned property. And then, we've got to do the additional two studies, once those developments, if they come to fruition, what the size would be, and that's where we stand today, right now.
John Moss, you can help echo your question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you go to the O E one that you had in the presentation that was the top view, where the first one that gave the categorization of the space utilization of the parking lots? I think that's the O E one, if that's what I would call it, that one.
The no bill?
Yes. Is it safe to assume that you have decompositions at another layer that would get to the types of property that it is, and that's in the database?
The uses?
Yes, like, you know, the hotel from the other public spaces?
So that's very much a baseline, and then on top of that, I guess, the value of having the team work through the model is not just the use, but how it's used, and even on event weekends, whether it's Neptune Festival and so on and so forth, that's been plugged in as well, so there's real-world data.
Got that, but from a public policy decision-making perspective, it's nice to know, when you're looking at a grid, what's publicly held property?
Yep.
And what's private? So when the time comes, that would be a good decomposition to see. And is there a narrative that describes the algorithm and the variables and the parameter values for the Park Plus model? Is that something that's available? Is that a document? Is that, is that a documented manual? Is that, where is that captured?
It's all up here.
No, I'm just kidding. Uh, we do, we have, we do have a document, sorry.
Um, we do have a series of white papers published on it, uh, that talk about the algorithm in general, uh, largely, just kinda very high level. We based it, um, kinda along the principles of our travel demand models. It's a gravity-based model, but it also has the, the components of price and proximity, so we-
You mentioned the Mercedes facility, which I'm familiar with. Are you using a proprietary software that you're just plugging the parameter values into, or is this something that is proprietary itself, that you developed unique to this application?
Park Plus is a proprietary software to Kim Lee Horn, that we, we've used across the, the nation.
Is there documentation in the public domain on it?
Yes. It is available.
Alright, thank you.
Barbara Henley, then John Oren.
Well, the problems that we hear from a lot, of course, are, uh, probably a spillover from the lots, that spill over into the neighborhoods, and a lot of that tends to be employee parking. Uh, how do you track what type of employee parking is needed for these businesses and so forth, at the oceanfront, and how they accommodate that? And, of course, we had that hanging out, their question, that we've left over from the cavalier, of, you know, whether or not, how are we going to continue to treat parking in the neighborhoods? And so forth, and whether we change those policies? Is all, are all of those questions a part of what you're looking at as well?
Um, yes, and parallel. Um, there are two, two additional kind of, uh, looks that we're doing. This is the most granular that we've really ever been able to get, um, to understanding the dynamic aspect of the parking, uh, system, and being able to, you know, to, to run models, uh, to plug and play, and not just working from a, a land use book that says, every hotel needs, you know, X number, you know, one space per hotel room. So, um, number one, uh, we are doing an analysis and trying to see, is there an opportunity for a employee, uh, parking system, uh, that does relate to the R P P P? And we're, we're just in, in the infancy of that, of looking at that, you know, is there a, a different method of being able to provide an, an opportunity there? So, we're starting on that. And then the second, related, but also we have to, uh, really, uh, have an understanding of this, and it, and again, it's in its infancy, there's not a lot of data or understanding out there, and that's the impact of ride sharing.
If you're, I was gonna wait till the very end, but what you just said, Jim Wood and I were to function Saturday night for the volunteer rescue squad banquet. I pull in, it's a narrow thing, there are four cars in front of me, and no valet there, and these cars are parked, you know, saying, gosh, it'll be thirty minutes we'll know about. Well, they're just getting out of the car, they're just getting out of the car and getting dropped off, you know? I mean, that is what I'm seeing more and more of. They were Ubered or Lyft or something, and I, as you know, I just came from Florida, and the hotel parking lot, you would've thought was, you would've not thought the hotel was a hundred percent occupied. And it was, and half of it, the parking lot was full, and there were continuous taxis and Uber, you know, coming, coming and going, and, but anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt, but-
No, sir.
That, that, that's too new to put into your, your science.
Well, he does have, uh, some in, but, but we're, we've gotta have a, a better, a better grasp of it, and especially from, I mean, we, you know, we benchmarked a, an entertainment venue in D.C. a few weeks ago. Obviously, it's a different market, and they've got a mass transit system, but six thousand person venue, and they say, get here how you can, that's their attitude. Uh, so, we're not in that market, and so, but, but it is, it is a, a reality. Um, Rob saw some trends this summer that we're still trying to understand, and we gotta look at, at, um, when folks were coming, and what was the weather, so we can better understand that, but we're starting to see some on that, and then, and we have the amphitheater numbers, uh, as well, that we can, that we can start to dig into.
That would be a good, good thing, yeah.
Mayor, your point, twelve percent of all the drop-offs at emergency rooms were Uber, not people from cars, there's a great people, they're not gonna wait for the ambulance, 'cause most places they pay, so it's four, or five, six hundred bucks, and so now Uber's becoming a rising trend of delivering people to emergency rooms in urban areas, for the cost of ambulance services is very high. So, it's to your point about a change, that I think it's hard to anticipate what the latent demand is, but it's growing.
That's the key, yeah.
I do concur with your assessment.
Yeah, Jimmy, good.
And the last thing embedded, um, Ms. Henley, in that employee analysis, and it kinda comes back to some of your questions at the beginning, is, uh, we have to have that primary research and understanding about, are there employees, uh, parking in some of these, uh, underutilized lots? And then there's policy, uh, decision, we, we mentioned it a year ago, so, that there are policy decisions, um, that, uh, could come to you about whether or not, is that an untapped resource for us to, to consider? We have more work to do on, on that, uh, with the attorney's office, and an understanding of how that works, but, that, we will, we're gonna try to get into those parcels to see, you know, i- is there, um, opportunity for public parking, that if we had an alternative of, uh, employee parking as a system, that we could, we could offset that? So, we're, we're, that's a key piece of it.
Very good. Thank you. John Oren.
Well, I mean, to piggyback on this conversation, too, I mean, I think it's, it's interesting to note, there's an awful lot of municipalities that is there designing new projects that have parking decks, actually designing them, so that some of those parking decks can actually be, uh, retrofitted into actual usable space in the future, with the anticipation that the, the number of cars that are gonna be parked are gonna be dramatically less, and they don't wanna have just these empty parking decks that, that can't be used for anything other than parking. So, uh, it's not unique to Virginia Beach, it's, it's a phenomenon, it's, it's all over the country. Um, I, I think it's, uh, you know, really nice, too, that we finally have some science to be able to look at this, and, and these, um, these models are actually not just benchmarked in terms of the initial data that goes in there, uh, but they're also running simulations for what they would anticipate to be the outcome, and then actually verifying that in the field. So, we, so we'll actually know, in, in the real world, does this really make sense? And, you know, as much as we don't wanna have to have a situation where we don't have enough parking, as, as public policymakers, we also don't wanna be in a situation where we've overbuilt parking. I mean, it, it, twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars of space, you know, we don't wanna have a space that we built because we thought we needed something, and it sits empty all of the time. And then, uh, another follow-up, and then I have just one quick question, is that in terms of the R P P program, the council would be interested to note that we did make several substantive changes to the program, I believe it was two years ago, uh, in terms of how we had the employees register and verify that they were current employees, how it is that we actually identified the, the vehicle that was being parked in the neighborhoods directly back to an employee, so if there was an issue, that we could actually address that. Uh, and we also raised the fee from what it is, what it had been before for the entire season, to a, a monthly fee. Uh, and that, the verification of that employment happens on a monthly basis, too, so you couldn't go in and hire me in June, and I quit June fifteenth, but I've got a parking pass that gets me, you know, in the, in the, uh, neighborhoods for the rest of the season. So, I, but I think, and we probably need to have an update from, from Rob's office at some point, but I mean, as a result of those changes, uh, the number of R P P passes that we are, are actually issuing to employees is about twenty percent of what it is that we were doing before. So, uh, you know, those have made big, big changes, and, and I, I mean, we're not talking about the huge quantity that you might think. So, I think that we probably are due, at some point in time, Mr. City Manager, an update on, on what those changes were, and what those effects have been. And then just the last, just, uh, housekeeping question. Ron, on the dome site estimates, I know we gotta massage it based on how that whole project gets scaled and presented, but in the fifteen hundred to the twenty-three hundred spaces, is that including the plans in the five-thirty that currently exist?
In a shared-use scenario, yes, sir. Yeah. So, we, we considering that, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
When you do come back, since you, I do like the fact that it's a database, it'd be interesting to see, since you are collecting real-time data under actual situations, is what's the reliability of your forecasted utilization before the summer season started, based on what you've historically collected, and then what the model predicted, and then what's the reliability of your forecast? Because in the end, all models are only good as the ability to forecast the real world, so it'd be good to know what the confidence factor is on the number, whatever we derive, whether it's eighty percent, ninety percent, it would be good to know, based upon the science, what is the confidence factor.
And I, I support what you were just asking, but I, I guess I can't just leave this alone. I guess we'll just do the best we can, because ride sharing is, I think, occurring now and rapidly, and statistically, how we get our arms around it, 'cause you hit the nail on the head, John Oren. You know, we're not responsible if we don't have enough parking, but all of a sudden, we won't, don't have tens of millions of dollars of parking spaces not being utilized.
I think you gotta do a sensitivity analysis to figure that out, and pick what risk you wanna take.
You're making it sound too simple, John. I, 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 I hear ya.
But it is simple to do a sensitivity analysis.
And the, the model has the capabilities to build in those reductions, whether they're coming by bike or pedestrian, and, and rideshare is certainly a component of it, so we can just do, you know, a series of a ten percent to a small sub-area, what does that impact look like, and then expand it throughout the entire study area.
You said you had the numbers on the amphitheater, off the top of your head, what's the percentage of people that ride share to the amphitheater? Do you recall?
I do not, no.
I'd really like to know. If you got it, I'd like to know that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Great presentation, and getting some good information. Put it together.
So, um, Mayor, members of council, uh, we have, um, we've thrown some pretty big numbers out there, and as, um, as you alluded to, uh, rightsizing our parking at twenty to twenty thou, two thousand dollars a space in a structured, uh, in a structured environment, or fifty-five hundred dollars a space in a surface parking lot, uh, and of course, we're not talking about any acquisition costs associated with those numbers. Uh, it's pretty important that we, um, that we get, uh, our arms around, uh, our investment portfolio, and what, what's our capital availability to, um, to even have these considerations? So, as promised last week, uh, Ms. Henley, you asked about the tip fund, and, and so in your, uh, in your Friday packet, you got a huge set of, uh, spreadsheets, and today, Kevin's here, uh, we've got extra sheets here, if you, if you need one, you, you forgot to bring your spreadsheets. I know this is, uh, isn't labeled as a workshop, but, uh, we are gonna spend some time taking a look at, uh, at these spreadsheet numbers, and, uh, and so, uh, what I asked our, uh, our Director of Management Services and Budget, is to, uh, to start this conversation, uh, back at where you were, uh, when you approved the budget over, uh, over a year ago, uh, and, or almost a year ago, and, uh, and to kinda walk you forward in the conversation. And I also asked him to begin the briefing today, to give a little bit of a historical background, because I'm not sure everybody recalls some of the wisdom that took place in the, in the late ni, in the nineties, and, uh, that created our ability to even have this conversation today. So, David?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Uh, I would like to introduce Kevin Chatelier, he's one of the administrators in our department, he's gonna be working the PowerPoint and the spreadsheet, so as you're looking down at the spreadsheet, he's also gonna be pointing, uh, a pointer, till you can see where we're at on the spreadsheet, so hopefully between all that-
Dave, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, he's kinda the tip guru here. So, uh, this is actually your third presentation on the tip fund since June. You may recall, on June sixth, Patty Phillips and Brad, Brad Van Dallman get a very thorough, um, discussion of the tip fund, including the projects that are financed, on August twenty-second. Patty is part of a tip, um, as part of a debt discussion, a capacity, also talked about the tip capacity. So, uh, some of this will be, uh, information that you've seen before. So, just getting into the background, the tip fund, Tourism Growth Investment Fund, was created in fiscal year ninety-three. So, this has been a policy of city council now for over a quarter of a century. So, it was set up to invest in tourism-related projects, and that's what we've been doing through all those years. In fiscal year oh-two, the Major Projects Fund was created, that basically funded the debt service associated with the convention center, Sandler Center, and some expansion parking for the aquarium. And then, in fiscal year twelve, since both of them are related to, um, paying for tourism initiatives, we decided, with council approval, to merge them, and that's how we got to the Tourism Investment Program Fund, the tip fund. So, just looking at the dedications, the things that Patty went through earlier, five cent of the seventy-five cent cigarette tax rate in the city goes to the tip fund, all of the amusement tax goes to the tip fund, the hotel tax, which is five percent in total here, of the eight percent hotel tax in the city goes to the tip fund. Now, there is an additional amount for Sandbridge, but just talking about the citywide rate, and one point oh-six percent of the five point five percent restaurant tax goes here. So, and there's also a dollar per night for five years, that's included from the hotel tax. So, that are, that is your major dedications that go to the tip fund. So, with that, we're gonna kinda dig into the spreadsheet a little bit. So, we've got three spreadsheets for you. So, uh, the first one is, we're gonna talk about, like Dave said, where were we when council adopted the budget on July first this year? Then the second spreadsheet, we're gonna go in a little more about where we are now, kinda where we're, as we're reviewing the nineteen budget, and then the third spreadsheet, he's asked us to do some scenario planning. So, let's get into the first spreadsheet, and for this, let's just kinda concentrate on the first part, on fiscal year eighteen. So, Kevin's gonna kinda show you where we are, as we kinda work through this. You can see the revenue was sho, shown in shades of blue, the darker blue are the dedicated taxes that I was discussing earlier. So, you can see, they make up the vast majority of the thirty-nine point five million dollars of revenue that's estimated in this fund for fiscal year eighteen. When you start getting into expenditures, and there, there's a lot of different line items, we've brought them, uh, broke them into bigger categories. In orange, when you look at the operations and maintenance, think about, uh, maintaining the beach, or landscaping down there, um, if a park bench gets broken, something like that, those are the maintenance and operations things that occur down there and are funded from the tip fund. The transit is the trolley, uh, investment that council makes for trolleys down there, and that's, uh, about one point two million. Then the area in pink are the beach events, so think of Beach Street USA, Patriotic Festival, Holiday Lights, Neptune Festival, those commitments are included in that number. So, getting to the yellow, and this is the one time I'm gonna have you stray a little bit to the right, beyond fiscal year eighteen, the yellow was gonna be the commitment for the arena funding. So, there was the one percent payment for hotel tax, and you can see that would've started in fiscal year twenty, based on our estimates. There were some event day costs that we had included, that would be charged to the tip fund, and then the debt service, with a partial payment in fiscal year nineteen, and then the eight point one million in fiscal year twenty, uh, was based on seventy-eight million dollars of three arena projects, the inbox, out-of-box, and Nineteenth Street improvements. So, when you look at that yellow going across, there was roughly twelve point five million dollars a year, estimated between the debt, event day costs, and so on, for the arena. So, now going to the purple, the debt service to date, think about the convention center we talked about, Pacific Avenue Improvement, Sandler Center, this is the existing debt that we have to pay off for bonds sold to date. And then the next line, gotta go a little bit over to the right, this assumes the forty million dollar sports center that council approved in the adopted budget, we have the debt starting in fiscal year twenty. And then in brown, there's a payment that the tip fund makes to the stormwater fund for street sweeping. So, in total, when we talk about all those expenditures, we're talking thirty-two point six million dollars a year. Now, when you compare that thirty-two point six million dollars a year to the thirty-nine point five in revenue, we have a surplus estimated in this year of six point nine million dollars, it's six point eight eight seven you're seeing there. And that contributes to the fund balance. So, that six point eight million dollars is adding to the previous fund balance from the year before, to give us twenty point three million dollars a year. And for the listening audience at home, think of fund balance like savings, you know, if you had personal savings. If you have more money that you contribute at the end of the year, you're gonna add to your savings, which in this case would be our cumulative fund balance. So, I ask you, once again, to kinda look over to the right over time, and you can see the cumulative fund balance, how it changes in this ten-year projection. And we kinda use a standard that ten percent of fund balance is a good number, so let me explain what that ten percent is. We compare the fund balance, in this case, that twenty point three eight million dollars you're seeing down there at the bottom of fiscal year eighteen, to the following year revenue, that forty point four million dollars, and that's how we calculate, when we start talking about eight percent, or ten percent, or twelve percent, we're comparing the fund balance to the following year's revenue. And we like to have roughly around ten percent as- And we like to have roughly around 10% as a minimum. So you can see, when you're looking across, even with the arena project, we had a substantial amount of debt service available for investing in tourism projects and well beyond our 10% number. So now, and that was what we looked like on July 1st this year, so what the council adopted budget. So now, we're going to go to the next page. So this is what it looks like now as we're reviewing the budget and looking forward into fiscal year '19, absent the arena. But there have been a few changes, so let me just talk about them briefly. So now, we're looking at fiscal year '19, because we're looking ahead, and city manager and the deputy city managers are reviewing budgets and having budget hearings as we talk. But one thing we have done already is update revenue. And you can see for fiscal year '19, we are estimating $41.6 million of revenue. If you compare that to the previous spreadsheet, you would see that that's increased $1.2 million. We do that every year. We look at revenue and see how we are, and then adjust it forward if we think it's going to increase, or adjust it downward if we think it's going to go down. But we feel pretty good about the trend of these revenues right now. You'll notice in the orange, the expenses we talked about earlier, we're still in the process of updating those. We're in the middle of budget hearings. So I'm sure they will change some as we go through the process, but for now, we have them the same as the previous year. The area in pink, kind of the beach events that we're showing, $4.79 million. Once again, you know, Neptune Festival, think of all of those. We've updated that a little bit, because that also coincides with the increase in the hotel tax related to special events. So the one thing that's missing, if you looked at this spreadsheet compared to the one I had just shown you, is that area in yellow, that $12.5 million that was there for the arena. Because at this point, that has gone away. So we have taken out the two arena projects, the inbox and the out-of-box. We've taken out the event day parking, and we've taken out the 1% payment. Now, we have kept the 19th Street improvement. There were three projects. We've kept that, and that's been folded into the existing debt that's now in purple, because we believe there's still benefit to have that project regardless of whether the arena's in place or not. And then once again, in purple, you can see the debt service associated for the sports center, that has not changed. Now, one thing I've introduced in fiscal year '19 is this area in green, that's $1.1 million. There were some initial expenses that were charged to the two arena projects, so we have to pay for them. Since they were financed by debt earlier, we're recommending to just pay for it by cash at this point. And then you can see the street sweeping. So in this case...
Come back to that. You say transfer, transfer to where?
The Row 21, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
That is to streets, we pay that to the Stormwater Fund for street sweeping from the TIP fund. So each fund, regardless of this one, has to pay other funds for their costs.
F R B?
Public Facility Revenue Bonds.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So bonds, in this case. So in total, expenses are $33.46 million, which has actually gone down from $34.1. But if you looked across to the right in the out years, they are significantly down because the arena costs are now out of the analysis here. So you can see that the contribution to fund balance in fiscal year '19 is $8.1 million. And the cumulative fund balance is now $28.566 million compared to $26.7 in '19 before. But if you look going across to the right now, we have really substantial fund balance available for investment in tourism projects. Even looking at the percentage of fund balance, very significant amounts. So what we want to do now is the city manager said, okay, well, let's take a look and look at some scenario planning. So if you go to the next spreadsheet, oops, all we've done, thank you, all we've done is taking that cumulative fund balance number that you saw on page two, the second spreadsheet, and we've brought it here. So that $20.4 million that Kevin is pointing to was on the previous spreadsheet, and we've just loaded that cumulative fund balance over time.
Can we just, Mr. Mayor, can we just go back one or two? I just want to make sure I understand the math. Because on ninth, because on the first sheet under the arena piece, the only projected expenditures in '19 was $2.15 million.
For partial, yeah.
Correct? But when we go into '19 on the second sheet, an expenditure for one of those projects, but that was in the arena cap, but not in '19, is now $4.8 million worth, right? Because you said we're going to go ahead and do the 19th Street thing anyway, which was originally in the arena piece, but there was no revenues, the amount of $4.8 million in FY '19 on the first sheet for the arena. So that's, that's an expenditure.
The $4.8 million, Mr. Moss?
Yeah, if you go back to the yellow where it says expenditures, it shows the only expenditure in that year was $2.2 million rounding up.
Yes.
But when you go to the second sheet, the expenditure for something you said was included in the arena project is 4.8. So it is an increase in expenditure, and you must be pulling the cash forward because you're pulling the requirement forward, correct?
Mr. Moss, that 4.8, are you talking about the area in, in pink there?
Yeah, you said this, the debt, you said the debt, existing debt for 19th Street.
No, I apologize. That $4.8 million is still the, the beach events and special events money. The, what I was saying, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, the, that whole yellow piece is gone, but we took, we took the $15 million, I'm sorry, $13 million 19th Street, and we folded it into that purple row there where that 13, I'm sorry, $23.149 million is.
Right. But if you, all I'm saying is that, that the debt service for the arena was $2.2 million in '19.
Right.
And we're not doing that now.
That's correct.
But we're doing 19th Street. Is, is the debt service on 19th Street now included in here?
It's, it's in that purple area. It's in that 20.
And how much of that debt service, because that's obviously an, some increase, how much of that is 19th Street? Could you tell me later? I'd like to know.
Yeah, I could do it. It would be roughly 13 of, divided by 78 million of that number of what it was.
And, and Mr. Moss, remember, it won't get picked up right here in this first call. It's going to get picked up out here in two years after we...
Right. So he pulled it forward. I understood you pulled the requirement forward.
Okay, is that...
Yes, I understand. I'm sure I have the right conclusion.
So let me, let me get back to, to where we were here. So we're looking at Row 1 through 5 here, not the cell number, but that row column. That is the numbers that were the cumulative fund balance from the absent arena spreadsheet. So we've just brought them forward so you can see where we're at from a capacity standpoint.
Brilliant.
So the city manager asked us to do some scenario planning. So one thing he said is, could you fund the, could you cash fund the public pier at $21.5 million, and what would that impact be? And you could see that under fiscal year '20. We have included that. He also asked us to look at debt financing to parking projects, expansion of the Convention Center complex for surface parking at $7 million, and which Mr. Williams was just talking about, and public pier parking at $3.5 million. We show the debt occurring for both of those in fiscal year '21. So now, when you look at the cumulative fund balance going over time, you could see that you still have a substantial amount of capacity to invest in tourism-related projects. And if I may, I'd like just to just give, you know, two or three closing thoughts, and then be glad to answer any questions, because I know going through a spreadsheet very detailed. There are, in the TIP fund, I'm sorry, in TGIF, there is a five-year review of the hotel tax. Historically, council has approved that based on recommendations from the Hotel Association. So we have included that that would be going forward in here. I also want to point out that this is a very conservative forecast from this standpoint. When we were looking at debt financing, we used the interest rate of 4.5%, which is very high compared to the environment we're in. But when we're looking two or three years out, we like to be conservative. The other thing that, that has not been taken account into the TIP fund is some of the revenue fiscal impact that would occur from the public peers, people visited, and they spend money on restaurant, amusement, hotels, or, you know, related to the sports center.
But that's been the purpose of this whole pro, this process from day one. We've invested in projects that would generate additional revenue to the city. As such, this is how these balances have grown over the years. Am I not correct?
It's correct. And, but for the purposes of our projection, we did kind of a straight-line projection, Mayor, without taking that...
I got that. I understand.
Yeah, so we think there's upside to this, if anything, you know, that this is a conservative. And when we're looking out 10 years, we want to be conservative to make sure. That's why we look at that 10% fund balance number. So with all that said, we think there is a lot of significant capacity to invest in tourism-related projects, so.
Thank you, Barbara.
Of course, this is just the money that's been designated to the TIP fund that's generated by that oceanfront area. And looking at that area that we've drawn into all of these pictures we've seen today as an oceanfront, is that strip along the very front and then the central part. You have a calculation of how much they pay to the city in real estate tax, personal property tax, BEPole, business personal property, and all of those other taxes. And I'm assuming those taxes go to the general fund.
That's correct. So there, you know, there are divisions, but real estate tax, personal property tax, sales tax, all of them go directly to the general fund. Some of the taxes that are shared, the ones that I showed in that dedication, some of that goes to the TAP fund, some of it goes to the, I've got it. No, he's got it. So, and I also should point out that when we talk about the real estate tax and personal property tax, that is shared with the schools as well. So not only does it impact the general fund, but through the revenue sharing formula, it also impacts the school operating fund.
To, oh, go ahead, John.
What I'd like to see, if we could, is since we've had this big discussion about our debt capacity, so we have a per capita debt policy of 3,000 per person, which we know we can't use. So there's, or affect our bond rating, that's last message last May. So there's some number below that. So what I, what I'd like to see, assuming we made no other changes in the CIP, you've got to get some baseline, other than these, how does that change our per capita debt utilization over what we currently have, and how much then is left between 3,000 and then this real number that we can really borrow, which I've never gotten an answer on that yet? But there's some line below that. At least it's less than 2,800, I do know that. Because that, that's what's left over that period. And, and it looks as if, if all those numbers, I realize they're speculation when you look at the out years, were true, that you would, may want to look at shorter-term debt if you believed in your numbers. So based upon this, you could retire that debt faster.
I wouldn't argue that point.
That, that point, retire that debt faster, and then freeing back the capacity to deal with other more pressing problems than this that our city faces. So it would be interesting just to see that, because that's a discussion point I've had consistently, is debt capacity is, in fact, the most shortish asset we have as availability to issue debt. And, and you don't get that look. And my last observation, when we had our last discussion, I don't know if it's up to retreat or where it was, but I remember the manager talking about, we need to revisit what really we carry as our contingency in light of the experiences of other communities.
The 10%, 15% fund balance.
Whatever, I don't know what the right number is. He just suggested that the current number probably is too low. And since this is a highly vulnerable area, if we should have some catastrophic area, there might want to be some idea of thinking of what that is. And, and that's a different kind of reserve than cost overruns, but it deals with our resiliency, if you want to use that term. But I do know the manager talked about that, and this is the time to make sure we are factoring that in from the start, since it's something he's mentioned in the past. I don't know what the right number is, but you suggested it was something more than 10%.
And Mr. Moss, do, and we can give you the details of what you're asking, but in this scenario planning that we're doing, we've eliminated, for the purposes of this, $65 million of arena debt, and add it $10 million of the parking. So it's actually down by $55 million in this exam. But we can give you the details of what it...
I understand that difference, but still, that does reduce the capacity of debt to deal with what people might judge to be higher priority issues, and that's a real factor to discuss in public.
I'll have John, and then Barbara Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think, I've got a comment I need to make about the, the additional tax that we had on there. But I think it's interesting to note, too, that, you know, the hotel industry, in addition to the monies that's going into the TIP fund, charges an additional 2% tax that goes directly into the general fund. So when a guest stays at, at one of my hotels, they, if it's a $100 bill that they're paying for their room, they're, they're paying the 5.5% state tax that everybody pays for any sales in the city. But they're also paying, the additional taxes are going to the TIP fund. But there's, the 2% of that is actually going directly into the general fund. But we all, we all know that, but sometimes the public, I think, forgets that that's an additional tax that goes directly into funding city services. The, the one thing that we are probably going to need to have a discussion on within this upcoming budget is that, you know, we levied an additional dollar per room night for the hotels that was in anticipation of the arena being built. Of course, that's not happening. So I don't know what the, what we, the proper thing to do is obviously the projection here.
We do have it in there for five years.
We do it for the full 5%. And the Hotel Association may be supportive of that. I think it's also interesting to note that when we did levy the additional dollar per room night, it was to bridge that temporary gap between what we needed in the TIP fund and what we needed to do the infrastructure. But when we levied that, one of the projects that was not in the CIP was the Field House. And so we have actually increased the CIP for resort-related items by the 40 million, which obviously that, that $1 has actually helped to, to make the, the fund balance here robust enough for us to, to handle that. But, but that does, we, the council needs to know that we are having those conversations, and will probably be part of our budget deliberations this spring.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, I'm glad you brought up that dollar, because that'd been something I've been wondering about, whether we would be retaining it since we are not doing the arena. But if we're looking at these projects, you know, to, to come in and fill that gap, I would hope that that would be something that they would be willing to do. But I, I guess, going to John's concern about debt, which we're all concerned about, when you, when you expense by cash the, the pier, that would be eliminating net for net. So you could also do the same thing for these two parking projects. We could pay them with cash rather than debt and, and address what John's concern is. I believe we, we did the amphitheater with cash.
We did.
And, you know, that's certainly been a...
Yeah, it's good to know.
It'd be interesting to see if you could also show us how we did it without debt with each of these things, and just how far we could go in avoiding debt and still create these projects.
Shannon, then Ben.
Just to clarify in my simple mind, and for those who might be listening, so looking at the sources of revenue that go into the TIP fund, it's safe to say that it's basically everything that is surrounding tourism and, and travel, amusement taxes, hotel taxes, parking, et cetera. And it's safe to say that no citizens' personal property or real estate taxes are going into this fund?
That's a correct statement, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ben?
Well, I was just going to make a, a comment. I thought this was a great presentation. And there was a comment made last week, something along the lines of tourism doesn't benefit the livability of the city for most residents in the city. And I think that this shows just the opposite. And I think that Mayor Sessoms is about to give us some numbers on what sort of taxes this industry generates for our city. And this is a huge benefit for every citizen in the city of Virginia Beach, not just oceanfront residents.
Before we do that, can I make one comment?
Absolutely.
I'm making, you made yours. If we're making all this investment, and I don't know that I'm there, but for those who are, you can't make this investment and say, I'm going to make this and later, a deal with my drainage problem. Because now you're talking, spending a lot of money in an area that has $113 million drainage problem. So why would you make this capital investment in an area and then not also address how you're going to deal with that? To me, it sounds like, you know, you build a stagecoach, but you don't have wheels, and it's not going to go many places. So it wouldn't make sense, you're going to tear up all this infrastructure, do all this stuff, and you wouldn't think upfront to have an integrated solution. So I think at some point, you need to talk about, because you're putting something that's in a risky area, that FEMA has a rating to, this private investment's got to carry insurance. And if we do this FEMA public participation, we've got to carry insurance on public facilities in those same regions. So I think we need to factor that aspect into the cost, if we do or we don't.
But the numbers look good, don't they?
I don't know what these numbers, I just see these numbers. That's awful. I like to see the now, the data set behind the numbers.
They were sent home over the weekend, John. You always read your material.
That's right. That's right. I read everything.
I know. But it was over the weekend. I read, I read this very, I read every word.
You get the spreadsheet, but you don't see the assumption, the analysis behind the spreadsheet.
John, did you want to respond a little bit?
I, just real quickly, I mean, of the 78 million that was originally programmed for the arena... I mean, of the 78 million that was originally programmed for the arena, a very large portion of that number was to handle stormwater issues for this particular site. And I think it's very clear that any future development that happens has to conform with the latest regulations, which means that all of the stormwater that is collected onsite has to be dealt with onsite as well. Which was not the condition that when these parking lots and whatever else exists there today was regulations then. So, and there's an awful lot that's going in in terms of using these types of things. So really, I agree that we need to do it so that it conforms with what our ultimate future plans is.
But that has already been taken consideration as we do these projects. That part of it would be done.
As we develop it...
You know what part of the 113 goes away?
Yeah. There's a... I think we're on the same sheet of music there.
I just want to see them.
But if I could digress just a few minutes, if I may, you know, the first thing, the taxes that were levied at that point in time, council members went and met with the Restaurant Association, they went and met with the Hotel Association. I remember even getting a phone call from a cigarette distributor, and I went and met with. And the truth of the matter is this, you know, we said these funds would be used for the type of projects that had been invested in. That's an absolute fact. Before we ever changed the direction of these funds, it would be our obligation to go back and say, "Yes, you support us in the tax increase. We're going to divert these funds to a different purpose." Also, the issue pertaining to, if you remember, we had the presentation made by Patty and everybody, Ron, on, you know, what does tourism bring to our city? And this was done a number of months ago, and Barbara just asked, "What about the real estate?" The real estate taxes are $42 million, okay? It's in the documentation. And the real estate taxes go in the general fund. But let's not also forget that that hotel tax, you know, yes, a lot of it goes into the tip, but $7.3 million goes into the government and school services. Let's not forget, there's $68 million in meal taxes in the city, okay? Every tourist that comes here gives back, except for the 1.... Where are those numbers? Here it is.
1.06.
1.06. But anyway, except for the 1.06 to the tip, .44 for open space, which is not tip, ladies and gentlemen, but still something very important to our city. And .50 for the tap, which is the advertising. And then, of course, 3.5% everybody's goes into the general fund. So 3.5% of that tourist goes into the general fund. And we can't forget that. And if you look at those numbers, and the cigarette tax, which we just talked about, is 8.6, that's $59.6 million. And that's a lot of money. Now, John, as we talked last time, you said, "I don't know if I buy off on these numbers, but I do accept that tourism is a positive generator over the expenses."
That's correct. I stand by that.
And these numbers, you know, you don't know if you buy off on them yet or not, but I would hope you say, you know...
I like the fact we can pay for it all with cash.
Well, but my point being here is pretty simple. I'd welcome an independent source looking at our numbers that have been presented to this city.
These numbers are proven, we've got 10 years' worth of historical data that tells you where they are and what the progress is.
I know, but I'm saying if they're being doubted, if there's anyone on this council that's doubting these numbers, I do not doubt them. David, I've got the greatest respect for you. You do a superb job, as does everyone in finance and everyone in budget that you're part of. But my truth, the bottom line is this, numbers speak for themselves, they're either right or wrong. A number of years ago, this body made the decision to try to do something progressive and responsible. And when I say responsible, we said we'd find a way to pay for these projects. That $202 million convention center is almost paid for now because of what occurred here. We have a beautiful Sandler Center. Now, I also will sit back and say to you that the key thing to me, debt capacity is absolutely critical. But the most important thing is there revenue to handle the capacity. That's the most important thing, because if you don't have the revenue, guess what? Your debt won't get paid. Your bond ratings will go down. But if you can always show good, solid, consistent revenue that can handle the debt that's out there, I assure you, financial advisors look at that very, very favorably. That's the reason we're in the condition we are now, because of cash flow and because of our reserves. Two very critical things. When we're sitting down here and have reserves of 49% on money that's used for debt service? Pretty strong.
Very strong. I would agree, but last year, we could have issued more debt, and we could have did more aggressively on flooding, maintained our reserve with cash flow. But we didn't. I'm just like, that argument works in many levels.
It does, but at the same time, I'll come back and tell you this. Would we have been in the position to put the amount of money that we just put into the CIP for stormwater in the last budget if we had not had success in a lot of these projects going into the general fund?
Yes, we could have. If we didn't take the $2.7 million of light rail money, or 2.1, and put it in other places in the budget, yes, we would have. That commitment didn't count to the public like the one that is...
But my thing to you is, John, and again, we're not going to sit here, but my point is, I respect your opinion very much, and I would ask that, that if you find fault in these numbers, that, you know, let us know what it is.
I don't find fault with the hotels. I do not see the methodology that validates the split between residents and tourists on the amusement tax, which is a big part of the money, or on the meal tax. We... I've yet to seen anyone who can show me the methodology that validates the reliability of the split that we use. If that exists, I would love to see it.
Well, that, if you recall, when we had this last presentation made, the first one, I've asked that that be given. If you recall, we've heard from anywhere from 15% of the people that are using it to over 30%. Ron, you're working on... When are we going to have that answer? Huh?
We're working on it.
You know, when are we going to get that answer? We've been asked... We asked for that the last meeting.
We had the White Paper that went through the three different methodologies to when the percentages were high.
Right. And I mean, we need to get... I'm tired of this, folks. And I mean, John and I are not going to agree.
Oh, I might agree if I see the data.
But my thing is, we have got something that we should... Everyone at this table should be proud of.
Right.
It is working. It is saving the citizens of Virginia Beach money every year, because funds that are in excess, that are generated by tourism, are sitting there and making sure that we do have a lower tax rate on homes. It's making sure we have an excellent police department, an excellent school system. It is a part of it. And then the... And then I'll conclude. Things like the convention center and the Sandler, which we all use.
And our rec centers.
But how they're paid for is where I'm going now. Don't forget how those projects were paid for. They were paid for by the tip. And don't forget, that, to me, is something that every citizen in Virginia Beach enjoys and has the benefit of, and did not have to pay for it.
Can I ask a question? Just remember, the convention center gets a $6.5 million direct payment from the unrestricted general fund, and it shows up in the budget.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I know you all had a great discussion.
No, I'm going to conclude it, and I enjoyed it.
Wow.
Do we... If this pier project gets approved, do we have any idea of the revenue that will be generated to the city?
Yeah.
Yes, sure.
I think we would like to hear that.
Well, we have to get to agreement.
Well, I understand. By preface it, if this is agreed upon, do we have an idea of revenue that it will generate? It would be nice to know.
John?
Mr. Ray?
We're not going to get an answer.
Oh, off the top of my head? No, it's... We've got some pro forma sheets that we've seen in the past. Remember, we started this in 16, early 16, we had pro forma. I'm not sure that he's updated all those spreadsheets and given us. And of course, I don't go anywhere without taking Patty into the bullpen with me, so, you know, we've got to proof the lane on the whole conversation, so... Because you're not going to look at me, you're going to look at Patty and ask her if they're legitimate and conservative, so we'll... It'll be part of this conversation going forward.
Can we get it next week, or is that too soon?
It's probably too soon. Well, I mean, one would say... I mean, let me throw back at you. Let me help you out a little bit. If you're going to put 25 million in, and they're going to match it at eight times, they're going to put 200 million in.
Oh, we know that part.
Okay.
Just kind of want to know what...
And so, you know it's oceanfront, you know it's entertainment, you know it's restaurants, it's going to be...
Well, I think it's a very exciting project. I'm just curious what kind of...
I'd venture to say we'd get our investment back, total investment back, in four years, completely.
That's a...
I'm speculating.
You are being real aggressive, Mayor, but...
I mean, now that I'm that way.
Anytime I wish I could do a deal, get my...
All right. Okay. Greg, I'm... Yes, sir. Just because I don't think I articulated it very well, but, and I know that we all know, sitting around this table, that the changes in the stormwater regulations have been very robust. And I certainly understand how the general public gets concerned about redevelopment and what can that mean in terms of the stormwater load, not just to the overall system, but to adjacent properties. But we all understand here as a council that the stormwater regulations require that all of the new development has to be handled onsite. And so, in the grand scheme of things, redevelopment is great for stormwater, because with the new regulations, it has to be handled onsite. So for someone who sits there and maybe has had a historical perspective where someone was able to take the runoff from their property and put it on the adjacent property, that doesn't exist anymore, like it or lump it, it can't happen. And so, the more it is that we can redevelop throughout the city, the better off our entire stormwater system is going to be, because those new needs that are going to be created by that new development is going to have to be handled onsite and will no longer be a problem for the surrounding neighbors.
And I might add that... And I might add that you have spent well over $120 million in an Atlantic stormwater system with major pumps, and this first phase of coming back to the central beach that I briefed you when the FEMA money comes in, and I have not changed my recommendation, we're coming right back at you to tell you that's where you ought to be dedicating that into design in the first phase. And for a simple $15 million first phase, you are able to grab all this, you're able to route it and put it into this major investment that has capacity to put it back out to see where it came from. So, yeah, you have some great opportunities to leverage this and to do it at a much discounted cost.
David, you had a great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right. We'll now go to city council comments. Yes, sir, Ben?
Excuse me. I had the pleasure of, on Sunday evening, reading a proclamation in your absence at the New Jerusalem Church of God in Christ at the 48th anniversary. It was a wonderful gathering of the Sea-Tac community. And as many of you all know, the New Jerusalem Church of God in Christ has had two major tragedies in the last three years. Bishop Thurgood, who is a legend, not only in the Sea-Tac community, but in the city of Virginia Beach, passed away unexpectedly. Two years later, his nephew, Pastor Adam Thurgood, the presiding pastor at New Jerusalem, passed away in a car accident, actually a farming accident. That's correct. And so, they have endured a lot, but the church is thriving now under the direction of Y.D. Thurgood, and the church is in good spirits. And so, it was nice to be able to wish them a happy 48th anniversary.
Thank you very much, Shannon.
I had the privilege of riding along with the Public Works crew as they were plowing the roads on Wednesday night before a storm last week. And it was out there from about midnight to about 4:30 in the morning, with these poor guys dropping their plows and spreading salt and sand and everything else that goes along with it. I know we've gotten quite a bit of heat, should have come a little earlier to melt the snow, but we've gotten quite a bit of heat from our citizens in regards to, you know, our response, or how long it took us to get back into motion, and the schools being canceled so long. But with all of that being said, I can honestly say that we had the most professional group of public service and EMS, and all of those guys out there working around the clock. They didn't go home with their families, they didn't sleep, they were there, they were working. People were saying to me, "They didn't drop the snow plows. Why did they not drop the snow plows?" Well, you can't drop a snow plow until it starts snowing, until you have some accumulation and you're going to tear up the streets. And these guys and girls, they know what they're doing. And I remember being in that truck, and our guy said, "Well, right now, we're just spreading salt and sand, we're not dropping our plows because there's not enough on the road." And he drove about, I don't know, 100 yards, and he says, "You know what? We probably do need to drop them." So he called back to his supervisor, who said, "Okay." So she then got on the phone and called all the plow drivers, and they all dropped their plows, and it was in sync, and they were doing what they were supposed to do. And what I want to say is kudos to all of these guys and gals that did such hard work for us, but to the public that might be listening, when we say stay off the streets unless you have to go out, it's such an important thing to do. We were at Lesnar Bridge, and we had to plow the bridge. And there was this car that was stuck sideways at the base of the bridge. They were some drunk people who were decided to go out joyriding, and it was 40 mile an hour winds and ice and snow and everything else, and this car was blocked. They couldn't move, we couldn't move them. It hindered our progress of being able to plow that bridge for a good 30 minutes, until these people were out there pushing and pulling and trying to do something with this car, all because they wanted to go out and have fun and see what was happening. And I understand, probably one reason I wanted to ride in the truck, I wanted to see what was going on. But with all that being said, please, you stay home unless you really have to go out, because these guys and women are really out working hard. And I just want to say that and thank the Public Works crews and everyone for letting me out there.
Thank you for saying that. Rosemary?
Thank you. I wanted to let you know, the Development Authority this morning, a very nice incentive grant, which for $500,000 was given to a company called B Cause, and that's B Cause, and it's for a data company that is mining Bitcoins. As... I still don't understand it. It's been explained, explained, and it's going to be...
Chinese company.
In the... Well, these are local people that are doing this company. And it's in the Hoffman Beverage Facility, and it's... It was a very good place, because there is a Dominion Energy plant.
Grid.
Right, grid, right next to them, because it draws a huge amount of electricity. And they're going to be putting in almost a million computers into this facility. So it's really kind of interesting, and I thought that y'all would like that. But also, I think it's today's somebody's birthday.
Pretty excited what we're doing. Any other comments?
Happy birthday, Dave. What's your birthday?
Oh, Dave, happy birthday. John Moss.
I had the privilege of listening to Dr. Cook. He's always a pleasure to listen to. I'll never forget, 12 years ago, he mentioned that sea level rise, not transportation, was tidewater's biggest problem. He proved to be quite prophetic. But he is getting... He mentioned that he was getting ready to move off and to other things, and he's being replaced by Professor Bob Mann in the Naval Post Graduate School. But he does have a good set of slides that's out there, and I would... I'd be good, Mr. Manager, to pull those down, but there's some very good insightful data that's not in the region report, that's in the more detailed slides, and it's very insightful. It basically... I shared some stuff on Facebook, I won't repeat those, so you can get some there. Federal budget status update, since that's something I track carefully. As you know, the continuing resolution expires...
What budget?
On the 19th. And then, there's either going to be four, one or two more conditional continuing resolutions, either take us to the 16th of February, or one big one that takes us to the 9th. They're looking to try to come up with a two-year bipartisan budget agreement, which[1728.16] They're looking to try to come up with a two-year bipartisan budget agreement, which they had, you know, for 17, 16, 17, for $250 million, $250 billion increase over the top line of the Budget Control Act, which would be about maybe a 60-40 split between national security and domestic spending. If all that doesn't happen, Dr. Cook's prospect says forecast is a lot more unpleasant than if it does happen, because in reality, the only time the region's economy has ever grown in a significant way is when defense spending has increased. There's never been a private sector-generated boom in the history of Hampton Roads. So I thought that was something interesting. But this is something you may not be tracking, because it wasn't in our legislative package, but there is a bill, as you're probably aware, because remember when we did HRTAC and all that was created up in the General Assembly, talked about commitments and promises, original legislation had no money going to rail or to transit, all to roads. But now, now, there is movement afoot by some in the General Assembly to actually amend the prior commitment they made with the, the public, I think, and allow HRTAC funds that come from gas to now be spent on transit. I'm going to be bringing back a resolution...
Who's doing that?
Chris, guess who? Chris Jones.
Chris Jones is doing this.
Totally.
Wait, you're done? Wow.
But I don't think that's in our best...
Are you aware of that? I'm not aware of that at all.
Do some more homework on that, but anyway, and I did have a town hall on Wednesday, but because of weather, I canceled it.
All right, thank you. Any other? Now, let's go to the agenda review, please. And we're glad to have you back, Mr. Vice Mayor. I see you're going to be stuck in Richmond.
Yeah, I thought I was, turns out I got out early.
Glad to have you.
Under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on any of them?
All consent, everybody? Got it.
All right. How about planning? Under Planning, Terrence and Titaniaville, Rose Hall, mission?
I'm fine, sir.
Number two, Decor LLC, Kempsville, okay. Three, Hertz Corporation, I.E. H Auto Parts LLC, Rose Hall?
That's good, sir.
Prince San Shops Owners Association, Inc., Prince San, Ms. Henley?
That's consent.
Ordinance to amend Section 901, City Ordinance to allow off-site parking facilities as permitted uses in B2 zoning district with specific requirements.
I'm going to know...
I've got a concern about that, too.
I just don't think this has got the attention it deserves.
You know, when I look at the fifth requirement, when it says, "If the off-site parking facility adjoins a residential or apartment district without an intervening street alley and so forth, have a 15-foot minimum yard shall be required," we've got sort of a, a bad situation with a parking lot that adjoins a residential, and with the experience that we've had with that one and are still having, I'm, I'm really nervous, because I think this, this will allow off-site parking at B2s that do adjoining residential, and it can clearly be an issue. And I'd like to have just more discussion of this or more information before we approve it, if we want to defer it.
Why don't we just go and defer?
Just defer it. How's that?
Okay. Fine. Do an indefinite, for, take your time, we'll get it back to us.
Yeah. Why are we doing this?
Is that okay, John?
It is. Barbara was right where I was, and I was trying to...
Okay, I, I, ordinances, six. Ordinance, raise short-term rentals based on a resolution out by City Council on January 8 to allow additional time for the planning commission and consider alternative ordinances and recommendations to defer.
Okay.
Are you okay?
Yep. I heard you spoke last week.
How are we going to, how long are we going to...
Till the planning commission comes in. You put a, you put a firm date in there?
Forty days, whatever that day was. It was forty days before, I don't know what the date came up, it was forty days. Well, I think the recommendation had been, they got forty days, which is to the 14th, and then it was going to be a public comment, and then...
On the 20th.
So I think we had talked indefinite, but if you want to put it, I would think it would be that first meeting in March, wouldn't it?
That's what we had said.
We'll be having it back.
Why don't you give that to Louis before we, you give us a firm date?
Just tell me how long it's going to be.
What was the date?
February 20th.
That you talked about, the vote?
We talked about both the 6th and the 20th, but we were thinking the 20th.
20th is what I read.
March 20th.
It's the March, yes, sir.
Is that okay?
All right.
For the vote, but we were going to have the public meetings and so forth before then.
On the 6th.
Okay, so it would be...
We were going to, we were going to give you a briefing in the workshop regarding the planning commission's decision, then schedule a public hearing the first Tuesday in March, and follow that up two weeks later in your next formal meeting with, with the decision, the 20th of March.
But this item, which is for the consideration of the ordinances, I believe would be the 20th. But, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ken, so before I go into closed session, I've been asked by a city manager to take a five-minute recess before we do that, before I read it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, we'll be back at 5:41.
Does it match up with what I remember? The 20th of March.
It does. It does match up. I remember forty days.
I remember saying March.[1307.33]